There's one over here.
My husband is going to be coming.
All right, we have 6:30, so we will call the Monday, November 8th City Council Meeting to Order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none will look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
That motion?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none will close public comments and move to consent. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion or clarifications? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. So with that, on the consent agenda, I would like to publicly thank the Mayor Baseball Club for their donations, BCI Construction, and Brunton Associates and Architects for their donations, and along with a special thanks to Rod and Lois Metzold for their donation to the fire station. If any of you guys are out there, there's a nice statue and a plaque that was donated by the Metzolds, which is very much appreciated. Really nice statue, so thank you to them. With that, then, we will move to the public hearing. And with that, do we open it right away, Maggie? Are you going to present? You're going to present first, then we'll open?
Yep, I'm going to say.
Okay.
All right. Mayor Dodge and council in front of you this evening is the public hearing on the 2021 street project assessments. So as you remember or recall, at the October 11th, 2021 City Council meeting, the City Council set the public hearing date for this evening. Letters were sent to property owners whose properties were within the project area, and information in that letter included the public hearing date and assessment amount based on the city's policy. So with that, this evening, the council is being asked to conduct a public hearing, which will begin with a presentation from the city engineer, and then we will open for public comment. So with that, I will have the city engineer do their presentation.
Next slide, Maggie. So what I'll do is just kind of recap kind of the steps of the process and kind of where we started and where we're at here tonight. So to start with, just, you know, kind of summarizing the improvements that we've seen now many times. We start up there between Highway 25 and Blue Tape. Also, we can start on Fifth Street between Highway 25 and Blue Tape, and then the east side of the highway between Highway 25 and the end of the road, which goes possibly 200 feet past. It's a bridge road or west bridge road, but that farthest east road there. We have new curb and gutter in the project area, new water main and services, and new sanitary sewer services that have all been constructed. Just a highlighted figure here showing the project area. This is the portion of the project that received water main and water services. That's just the fifth street portion of the project. Sanitary sewer, the sanitary sewer on the project area has actually been lined in the past, so we didn't do any or make any improvements to the sanitary sewer main, but we did replace all sewer services along Fifth Street. And then this is just the figure showing the properties that are funding the project area and have proposed assessments for the project. So for project communications, just wanted to kind of just recap kind of where we started with this process and where we are here tonight. So back in September of last year is when the city council authorized the preparation of the feasibility report for the project. Fulton and May worked on that project, and it was November 23rd when a draft study was brought to the council to review kind of how the study was shaping up. We discussed some of the project's scope, get a little direction on what the project was going to be based on questions that came up during our preparation of the study. At that time, we went back, finalized the report, brought it back to the council on December 28th. At that time, the council accepted the report and then authorized the improvement here. So once we got into 2021, then, in January, we started by, we had a virtual open house. If you recall, we were still at that time, we weren't having in-person meetings, but we had a virtual open house on the 19th, and then on the 25th is when we had the improvement hearing. The purpose of those two meetings, the first one was intended to be a little bit more of an informal information gathering, presenting. Essentially, the information was going to be presented at the improvement hearing, but again, in a little bit more of a casual setting, hopefully giving people a chance to ask questions and give us some input before the improvement hearing on the 25th. The improvement hearing, then, is when residents that were in the project area were supposed to be assessed, they had the opportunity to make some comments on the proposed improvements. After the improvement hearing, the council ordered the project to continue, and the plans and specifications were prepared, and went out for competitive bidding, and it was March 22nd, then, when the council reviewed the bids and awarded the project modular excavating. And then, once we got to spring is when construction started. Throughout the project, we've tried to continually provide information on the status of the project, and provided weekly newsletters, other notifications as needed, been providing information on the city website in an effort to keep people informed. Hopefully, people understood kind of throughout the project who their contacts were if they had questions, concerns during construction. Construction now is completed, and we're here on November 8th, which is the assessment hearing. As Maggie mentioned, notifications have been given out and proposed assessments, and so the intent tonight is to get input and feedback from the public on those proposed assessments. The assessment policy that has been used on this and past projects in the city of mayor is that streets are assessed 30% by adjusted front footage. Curb and gutter is 100% assessed. Water main is 30% assessed on a per lot basis, per unit basis. Water services are 100% assessed. Sanitary sewer services 100% assessed, again, on a per unit, per lot basis. And then corner properties, a few corner properties on this project where the short side is assessed, the actual front footage of the property, the long side of a corner lot is assessed, one half of that footage of the long side of the project, or the property. From an assessment standpoint, the portionment of the cost for the project, I just have kind of side by side here. At the time of the feasibility study, when the estimates for the project were put together, the assessable portion of the project was estimated to be a little over $594,000. City costs for the project were estimated at $891,000. Based on actual costs, applying the assessment policy, again, actual proposed assessment is $475,303.16, and the city cost of the project is $760,885.11. So how that breaks down, then, with the different components of the project, again, is applying that assessment rule, where we started from an estimate standpoint feasibility study compared to actual cost. Street storm sewer portion of the project is estimated, or it's proposed at $255,463.16. That equates $85.99 per front foot compared to $96 at the time of feasibility study. The curb, $80,540.16, proposed to be assessed, that equates $27.15 per foot. Water main, $71,359.16, or $3,946.44 per unit. Water services, $27,699.16, or $1,844.06 per unit, and then sanitary sewer services, $41,020, which equates $2,930.06 per unit. The term of the assessment, the assessments would be payable in equal annual installments, standing over a 15-year period, which has been set by the council. First installment would be the first Monday in January of 2022, and then the balance would bear interest at a rate of 3.3, 3.45% per annum. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the cost and the process that we've gone through to get to this point. And with that, I'd be happy answering questions you have at this time, otherwise you can now open the public hearing.
Any questions for the city engineer? Hearing none. Then, at 6:41, we will open the public hearing to discuss the assessments. So if anyone would like to come forward, they certainly can. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm Joel Lance Crainer. I'm the Executive Director at Mary Lutheran High School. On the assessment, it actually says we're Carver County Lutheran High School, but we do business as Mary Lutheran High School. Thank you. Thank you for the chance we have, I had to speak tonight, and for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the partnership we've had for 60 years of City of Mayor, Mary Lutheran High School. We appreciate that as well. 2008 law was passed in regards to special assessments for projects like this, and essentially, the assessment cannot exceed the special benefit to the property as measured by increased value to the land due to the improvement. We have a concern that the assessment for Mary Lutheran High School is beyond that. The Carver County Property Tax Department, we have an assessment from 2020, and, excuse me, I'll take my glasses off for this tiny print, of $9,880,000. That was in 2020. In 2021, it had declined to $9,724,800. For 2022, and I got this from the assessor today, Marcus is his name, over at the Carver County Property Tax Department, it has declined once again to $9,572,900. So clearly, our property, according to the property tax statement, our assessed value, estimated value, has declined every year. It has not increased. So in addition to that, the, so the net benefit, you know, cannot be increased according to the law if the value of the property declines. We have no reason to assume that our property value will increase. We're not building. That is no longer a major entrance to our school, even though I know neighbors have their own concerns about that, but it's still promoted not as our major entrance to the school. That's not really any strong curb appeal for us as a result of the project. We're not selling our property. We, the utilities already existed at the property. We already had water and sewer, as you pointed out, I think if I heard that right, Dave, that the sanitary sewer was actually not upgraded at all, correct?
Service was.
Service was replaced. The service to the property, correct, but the, but the actual road itself was not. We, we know according to the law that the assessment cannot exceed the special benefit, and our special benefit based upon our property value, based upon the assessment from the county assessor, is declined. It will have declined the last three years. To appeal, so anyway, nothing has changed in regards to Mary Lutheran High School. We had water and sewer before. We still have water and sewer today. We had the frontage of the road before. We still have the same frontage of the road today. And as, you know, you came and take a look, by the way, great project. Road looks great. Everything's nice. But as far as fulfilling the mandates of the law, with the, again, assessed property value declining, we would respectfully ask that the assessment made to Carver County Lutheran High School, Mary Lutheran High School, that we would respectfully challenge that as not in accordance with state law. Any, it's public comment. Any questions that I could answer that you might have?
Questions for Joel? I guess not at this time, then. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up? Feel free.
Hi, I'm Susie Poplar. My husband, Mike, we're on Fifth Street, just up by Lutheran High. So that was actually going to be one of the questions I was going to ask is if there was a contestment like this as an example, is, I guess if there's reductions somewhere along the way, how does that affect, you know, whether the, the people in the assessment area, but also just taxpayers in general? How is that offset? So I think my concern with that was just validated, and I think too, Mr. Lance Crainer talked about that not being their normal entrance. There's obviously concerns. We've been talking about that for years. And the usage of the road hasn't changed, so a property owner like us, a $20,000 assessment over 15 years will pay $30,000. That's a lot of money, and there's a lot of extra usage being brought in there by the school. So if they turn around and contest, and then here we're left to pay the difference or suffer for that somehow, I'd like to know how that gets addressed, you know, as far as the contestment and the difference there. But Maggie, you know, I know this is something we've been talking about for probably four years, and I don't know when the right time is with those entrances up. You know, nothing's changed. The usage hasn't changed, and it's impacting us. I think when we see the amount of wear and tear and usage on the road being used, not just for residents, you know, that's, it's a hard number to take. So there's definitely concerns there. And I'd kind of like to know if there's still consideration to, you know, and those entrances are there, people are going to use them. So what can change with that, and especially in light of kind of the heavy price tag we're, we're being hit with? It's a lot.
It's certainly a lot. Any?
I mean, I don't have a, I mean, we can talk offline, too. I know.
Well, and we've done that. We've done that many times.
And we've looked, we've worked with the school. We've talked about it. We switched the address. Again, it's a public street. We can't stop people from using it. And we've talked with the high school about closing the street, I mean, the access points, and there, we can't force them to. There's, I think they would like, they've stated that they want to keep those open. We have done some reduction improvements with the entrances, but again, it's a public street. We've changed the address. We've tried to educate. We're trying to work with the school for them to educate people, too, but we honestly, as a city, it's, we can't do much, I mean, unless.
Well, considering that it's a public street, we understand that. I mean, they're going to, it gets used very, very heavily.
Right.
I mean, I know you ain't going to change how people have been using the road forever. Like you said, 60 years they've been using Fifth Street.
And the entrances have stayed the exact same way. I mean, there's one at the very end that's no longer there. That's not doing anything.
So a couple things. One, for the public hearing, we need to stick to the assessment. I mean, that's what we're here to talk about.
That's where we're going.
As far as, as far as the roads and who's using the roads, and it's a public road, we can certainly have that discussion. Any council meeting, we want, we can have that discussion. We can get on the agenda and talk about it for sure, but we kind of, we, I want to try to stay to, to the assessment policy.
How does the contestment, then? Any, whether Lutheran High or someone else, how is that, how does that affect others?
And that's, and that's what we're, exactly what we're discussing. So how it'll be, it won't be a case by case. We have our, our assessment policy that we're following. If that changed and council decided it'll be across the board, it wouldn't be individual properties are going to be, my guess would be, if it's redo, it would be everyone. And it would then, my guess would be the city would pick up that if that's what happened.
Okay.
But it won't be a case by case that one person contested, okay, so theirs gets lowered, and now the rest of the property owners pick up that piece. That, that, I don't see that happening. So I hope that answers that question, so.
Dave, do you have any clarification on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you're right. I mean, so tonight, what the council's going to be asked to do is consider an assessment rule. And my advice would be that whatever you, whatever, if you were to make adjustments, that you're, you're right, that you would, you would make it to the assessable portion of the project. It wouldn't be a property by property adjustment. If after the fact, if somebody contests their assessment, ultimately was able to show that the benefit wasn't met, whatever the case may be, that that is, somebody else told you that, that you had to lower that assessment, at that point, it would be a city cost. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, that amount wouldn't be spread over the other properties. It would be a, a cost that the city would have to include in their portion of the project.
Right. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. I do have one other question, just about the assessment.
Can you please come up to the mic?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Just the assessment in general, whatever the number is arrived at. So it'll go, start in our property taxes in 2022 on our property tax statement, but is there no option other than if you pay it ahead of time? You have to pay the full amount ahead of time, then you have no interest. But there's otherwise no option for partial payments, like upfront or like over a couple of years, something like that?
So at any time, you could pay it off?
Okay, that's, okay.
There would be a date, and you, you, I don't, if you don't have that information.
It wasn't in the letter, but I wanted to clarify.
So if you miss that date, the, the interest for that year will get put on the property taxes. At any time, you could determine you want to pay that off?
Like on year four?
Yep. You could pay it off, and, you know, pay attention to that date, so hopefully you would do that before that, that interest gets put on the balance that year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
One more, one more time. I forgot a point. Now that I'm helping all my neighbors.
Please, come on up, Joel.
One other piece I'd like to, to point out as well. We did, and just for the record, we did submit to the city an objection to the proposed assessment, and we have that document received by Janelle. Thank you very much. Signed. And also, we did put a request for market value analysis for the assessment as well, so that we would be able to, to get to the bottom of this. And just one thought, and again, most of us are amateurs at this, obviously, right? I'm, I'm an educator. But the, the one thing that I would concern, be concerned about is if we were to challenge this, then in the district court, the cost to the city for legal fees, for property valuations, appraisals, and so forth, as well as to each of our property owners, including Mary Lutheran High School, you know, I, I would recommend that we would consider that as a city, and I'm a resident of Mary Lutheran, of Mary, Minnesota as well, that we would consider those costs that could possibly occur in a challenge in the district court as we seek to adjust these assessments to a more reasonable level at the level according to the law. So, thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening. Troy Puckett, not quite a resident yet, 426 at the very end. This is pretty minor, but to be moving in and get hit right away, took a little bit out of the, you know, a little steam out of the excitement of moving in, but it is what it is. I would just ask, and I talked to Maggie today, if possible, to see in writing the cost of the reconstruction of the sod and of the driveways. I just wanted to see in writing that I did not get included in that, since I didn't, I don't have grass yet, and I don't have a driveway yet. So I just want to make sure that it just wasn't divided by 25, if that's the number. I know it's not a big deal, but at this point, if it was part of it, I'd either like to get that taken off my assessment, or next year have the grass in the driveway put in as everyone else did. That's all. Thanks.
Just to that point is, so the, the way this was done is no, it is the project cost, and it's divided by the front footage on there. Every property was restored based on the condition of the property when we got there. So yeah, you're correct. Your, your property doesn't have sod. I'm presuming there's some restoration that needs to happen on that property in general, and then driveway work as well as, I think there's probably a little gravel, you know, once we backfilled there. But basically, the way it works is work that we didn't pay for that sod, we didn't pay the contractor for that sod, we didn't pay the contractor for that driveway work, so it, it is then the, the total cost of the project spread over the, the front footage.
Including mine?
Including yours, yes.
So I did get charged?
You got charged your portion of the project cost, yes.
And did not get serviced?
The, well, I would, I would say that your property was restored to the condition that it was in.
At the same rate as everybody else?
No, because that, if we would, if we would have put sod at your property, if we would have paved the driveway at your property, the proper, the cost of the project would have gone up and, and would have, again, been spread.
And Dave, I'm asking, is it right?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I could follow up with you on that, but yeah. The, the other thing I'll just note on your property, too, and we, we did, we had several conversations, you know, when you were looking at that property, but that's the, the lot at the end of Fifth Street that didn't have a street in front of it. We've always struggled with what to do with that, because we've had several times where somebody's come inquired about building a house at the end of the street, and the requirement was always going to be that if you did that, you needed to build a street in front of your, your, the property at your cost. Well, obviously, 100% of that street is a pretty big expense, and that ultimately is why that lot sat there for a long time. So it may be a surprise or we weren't clear, but that is, it actually, the way it worked out, the cost of getting a paved road there to the property is less than what it was proposed when it was a standalone project.
cost of the reconstruction of the sod and of the driveways. I just wanted to see in writing that I did not get included in that since I didn't, I don't have grass yet and I don't have a driveway yet. So I just want to make sure that it just wasn't divided by 25, if that's the number. Uh, I know it's not a big deal, but, uh, at this point, if it was part of it, I'd either like to get that taken off my assessment or next year have the grass and the driveway put in as everyone else did. That's all. Thanks.
Just to that point is, so the, the way this was done is no, it is the project cost and it's divided by the front footage on there. Every property was restored based on the condition of the property when we got there. So yeah, you're correct. Your, your property doesn't have sod. I'm presuming there's some restoration that needs to happen on that property in general. And then driveway work as well as, I think there's probably a little gravel, you know, once we backfilled there. But basically, the way it works is work that we didn't pay for that sod, we didn't pay the contractor for that sod, we didn't pay to the contractor for that driveway work. So it, it is then the, the total cost of the project spread over the, the front footage.
Including mine?
Including yours, yes.
So I did get charged?
You got charged your portion of the project cost, yes.
And did not get service?
The, well, I would, I would say that your property was restored to the condition that it was in.
At the same rate as everybody else?
Uh, no, because that, if we would, if we would have put sod at your property, if we would have paved the driveway at your property, the proper, the cost of the project would have gone up and, and would have, again, been spread. Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I could follow up with you on that, but yeah. The, the other thing I'll just note on your property too, and we, we did, we had several conversations, you know, when you were looking at that property. But that's the, the lot at the end of Fifth Street where, that didn't have a street in front of it. We've always struggled with what to do with that because we've had several times where somebody's come inquired about building a house at the end of the street. And the requirement was always going to be that if you did that, you needed to build a street in front of your, your, the property at your cost. Well, obviously, 100% of that street is a pretty big expense and that ultimately is why that lot sat there for a long time. So it may be a surprise or, or we weren't clear, but that is, it actually, the way it worked out, the cost of getting a paved road there to the property is less than what it was proposed when it was a standalone project.
Okay. And you'll follow up and get the information then?
Yeah, we, we can follow up, okay.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, Graham. My question is, this is a, it's going to be a $4,000 increase a year pretty much on my taxes for 15 years. Our houses are all old up there. And now we're getting hit, you know, if we carry this for 15 years, it's almost another, coming up to like $183 more a month when I'm paying property tax for up there, which is a lot. And it's just an older, older property that we live on.
I'm sorry, what was your address?
225th Street.
Okay, thank you.
Corner lot, so I got hit on the side too.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, basically, I'm just saying it's a lot of money, $4,000, is what it's going to come up to a year to live there, which if you go, I could go live in Mound for that or Minnetoka for that price, you know? So it's actually costing us a lot of money and a lot of my people that live in that neighborhood that are old, that don't have that. So they have to come up with that somewhere. That's my question. So like I said, I got hit on the side street myself, now I'm getting hit on the front side of the road. So for me, it's kind of a double whammy because I have a corner lot. That's my concern, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh Cinderlier. I live at 121 Third Street. I apologize, I don't have my form in front of me, but I do know that my lot was the, on the lower side as far as the general taxes and this assessment. Dave, you were saying that it was brought up to the condition that it was when it started, yes?
The restoration, that was the intent.
Uh, right across the street from me is the park.
Yes.
Now, that was not, that is not in the condition that it was when the project, right before the project was started.
Yep, the, the parking was put in.
Yes. My question is that parking also added into that factor? Because out of the four properties that are on that, on Third Street that were affected by the construction?
Yep.
Um, it seems like it was just an even divide by four. So I'm wondering if that parking was added into that?
The parking was a separate cost at the city.
Separate one, okay, thank you.
But you're, you're, I'm just sorry, you are correct in that the cost, the, the cost of the improvements were spread on a per, per front foot basis, including the city's frontage there.
It's at the bottom right there. A second. Sorry, it's not like clear, but it's, let me zoom in.
Good.
And, and I would like to say, I would like the opportunity just to check to make sure that that is the way the calculations are. Because that is correct. If, if that, if our math doesn't include taking the parking piece of that out, that needs to be adjusted on the, the final assessment rule. So we should just make a note of that one, whatever you do to make sure that I double check that to make sure that's correct.
Reconfirm the numbers on Third?
Uh, well, no, it would be the project as a whole. The street, the street costs are all, all together, whether you were on Third or Fifth. Um, but we need to make sure that, that, that parking portion isn't included in that number. So I would like the opportunity to just check to make sure that's correct.
Yeah.
Just one other dealer, is there a chance we can go back to that first slide? It shows the percentages of what the city covered and what the residents covered? I think it was a very, maybe it was on Dave's slide, maybe it was Dave's slide?
Yeah, it was, uh, in the.
You know, it looks like that the city was, was accepting of paying 820 some thousand dollars to this project at the beginning. And one more slide up where it shows the percentages. I see some of the percentages were at 100% for us, 30% for us.
Up again. There you go.
There you go.
Yeah. Is there anything from the standpoint of us that live here to contest some of this stuff? Is there, is there a way we can negotiate with the city to say, you know, how about you guys do 80/20 on some, like, you know, could the curb and gutter be 80/20? Is there anything like that that we can do as, as residents to, to help out? You know, there's some great points here on, on how much people are paying. I know I'm a brand new resident here, but, you know, I'm getting hit just like everybody. And I'm not, you know, I haven't been around here, so I don't know how this got established. But if the city of mayor was willing to pay 820,000 or 890,000 on the estimated, maybe there's some good gesture here that we can adjust some of these percentages and even save people, you know, maybe some money per year, 500, if, if that's a possibility. I don't know how we'd go about that or, I don't know if we all signed tonight. Just kidding. But is there a possibility that some of this can be looked at and not pay 100%?
And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, um, the feasibility study that showed the 891. So that number is what? I don't know, um, that was the high cost. We knew it would come in lower. What the city actually bonded for was based on the, the bid amount. And so based on that, we have bond payments that will be payable over 15 years. So that bond amount, the 760, um, we pay that back, we pay that per year for 15 years based on a tax levy that's taxed to the entire city.
I totally understand as you guys are doing the same thing, we're going to be, we're going to be paying every year on ours. What I'm saying is, how do we go back to that point where we're not paying 100% if, if on some items we're paying 30%? Why can't we talk about paying 20% as a negotiable?
Right, and the information provided tonight is just based on policy that we've historically used. And so, um, it is something that the city council can listen to. Uh, historically, we've used this policy, again, going back to 2004. Um, so I did include some information on past projects, how we've done assessments in the past.
Right, and I completely understand that, Megan. I am not, I, I'm just saying, what happened 20 years ago is different than what happens today.
Would you mind coming, just because there may be people virtually listening?
I, I'm just asking the council, the city council, just to consider it because, you know, what happened 20 years ago is a lot different than what's going on today. I mean, what happened a year ago is different than today. We're paying a lot more for gas, we're paying a lot more for groceries. Everything's different. So I'm just asking, you know, if, if there's a way to at least look at some of that stuff and say, you know, we are willing to, to work with the residents. You know, when I, when I looked at building here, the, the cost for permit is, is almost doubled in a lot of other counties. Um, and to be quite honest, I'm, I'm excited to move to mayor, but I mean, we don't have a ton of stuff here, mayor. I mean, there's no grocery store. There's other things that aren't here. Um, so we're paying a lot of money just for permits and, and other things. I just wanted to, to say, if there's a way to look at some of this, to drop some of our payments down a little bit for the next 15 years, I think it'd be awesome. But if you can't do it, you can't do it. I'm just asking for you guys to look into it.
Thank you.
So does, anybody have the date of the last time the street was done? Like 20 some years ago, right?
And I don't have the, the exact history on that. I wasn't here. Um, the utilities, I believe, were constructed in probably the early 70s. And I believe, so the road would have probably been new at that time when they put in the utilities. And our best understanding of it is at some point, the road was resurfaced between utilities.
It was underlayment and everything done. I was, this is the second time the street's been done since I've lived, lived there. You know, when you got, what, 12 houses on the street, right?
Yep.
Yeah, really, I think we ruined it. I mean, for 24 grand, that's what it's cost, I mean.
Yeah.
Would you mind coming to the podium also, Jeff? Thank you.
Name's Jeff, 113 Fifth Street. Been a resident since 1964 in town, or 1961. So I bought place 93. I said the place, the street was redone. This goes all the way back to Uncle Ron. Like I said, the road was tore out, underlayments. Like I said, there's 12, 13 houses on this street. And now I'm getting assessed for over $24,000. And I'm, I'm trying to understand that if that street was done that well back then with 12, 13 places on this street and it's being done again, you know, I feel kind of, I struggle with, you know, 11, $12,000 for the street, paying that kind of money that I hardly used except for 50, 50 some feet up the street and I'm in my driveway and I'm paying over 100, almost 100 bucks a foot. So that's my concern is the tar road. I, I'm all happy with curb and gutter infrastructure, but I just, I got a hard time swallowing that, that big chunk for the street. So that's where I'm at with that, so.
Thank you.
My name's Nishane. I also live at 121 Third Street. And I just had two questions. So we are a corner lot and the work was done only on Third Street, which is our address. Um, are we assessed on, as a corner, even though the other road is not, was not worked on? Does that make sense? Blue Jay? Does that make sense? Because.
You, you were assessed as a corner. So your, your long side was assessed half of the length.
Okay, so.
So 75 feet versus 150.
So it, it was only half of the long side, not both the short side and?
Right, so now, if, if someday Blue Jay gets done and there's assessments of portion, or associated with that project, your full side or your, your short side would potentially be subject to assessment as part of that project?
Okay.
If and when that ever happens.
Perfect. And then my only other statement, I guess, would be, is a concern that the parking that you put in is great for all residents. And I understand that it adds value to the park, which it's a very nice park with the basketball court. Um, but we are, we have, we're the only residential house on that street. We get a lot of traffic going through there for the gym and now the park is added to that. And we are very minuscule for the use of that road in comparison to what I feel like we're going to continually pay over the life of our stay at that house because of the state of where it's at, I guess. And that's just my concern that just because of the placement of our house in a little bit busier area, we're going to pay a lot more over the life of our property there. Especially with the added parking that you guys just put in, which I know is to better the whole city, but it is a negative to our property. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
My name is Steve. I was just wondering how the partial payment plan works and people with disabilities, that they can't pay on this? What, would they lose their home or what happens? That's what I'm wondering.
No, there's a, and I would, I can get you more information. There is a, um, an application process that would defer it, the payment. Um, so you, I don't have all the information in front of me, but there's an option to, um, defer the assessment, uh, depending on, I think it's age and disability.
Should I come in and get those papers?
Yeah, yep, you would have, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? And Maggie, um, other than Mayor Lutheran's, uh, Mayor Lutheran High's, uh, letter that was in our packet, are there any other emails or phone calls that we want to put on the record?
Um, no. So we did not receive any other besides that letter. And then we have documented everybody's statements this evening for official record.
Anyone else? Any more last comments before we close the public hearing?
I just would like to know if, will we get word back from you guys on some of our questions tonight before January where things are, or how will we be notified on some of the things that we talked about today?
Yes, any of the specific items that we're going to follow up on, we'll follow up on. And as far as, are we gonna change some, our policy tonight and do those, you know, and, and some of the different cost share that you'll, you should know today. I mean, here in the meeting. But otherwise, all the questions that we said we'd follow up on, they'll get you the information needed. Yep. Anyone else? One, one more time. Just want to make sure everyone's heard. All right, with that then, Janelle, at 7:12, we will close the public hearing for the 2021 Street Project. With that then, um, any discussion with council? Any questions needed before we make any decisions? Any clarification needed? Anything from the city engineer? Anything from the administrator?
Your honor, the, the one thing, a couple of comments about the assessment policy. I say this not to say it's, it's right, wrong or, or otherwise, but the, the way that it's broken out, just kind of the methodology of it, the streets are 30%. And it kind of goes to the, the comment of the streets have a benefit to the property by providing the access, the, and, uh, access to the property, access to the greater transportation system, so on and so forth. And they clearly have a public benefit because they're public streets. So the 30% tries to recognize a benefit to the property and a benefit to the, to the, um, the community as a whole. Curb and gutter, the thought process there is the curb and gutter in the front of the street directly facilitates the drainage at the property. That's, that's why it's 100%. Uh, water main, again, there's a benefit to the, to the community as a whole from the water system that's in place. There's also a benefit to the property. So again, kind of understanding that public benefit and a, and a property benefit, the 30%, the water service that directly serves the house, benefit to the property at 100%. Sanitary sewer provides that connection to the house, again, 100%. So just wanted to try to point out the fact that the assessment policy does try to at least account for the fact that there are benefits to the, the community as a whole as part of this project, which is why the city has a, a portion of the cost that it takes on as part of this project. Again, you, you can have a discussion as to whether or not those percentages are correct or not. I just wanted to kind of point out that that generally, for an assessment policy, that's kind of the methodology behind it. This is the policy that the city's been using for a while. It, it was used before I was city engineer here in the, I don't know, early 2000s. I'm not that old, but a while back. And, um, and we've had the Highway 25, uh, project use this assessment policy, the East Side Reconstruction Poli, uh, project, same, same policy. Just, just wanted to try to put a little context to kind of why, why some of those percentages are different.
I think those are good points.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. So Dave, what would you normally say that the, the, this assessment or the, the whole reconstruction, is there, is there, would there be a dollar value to each of the residents' property if they went to sell their house with the improvements?
What I would say to the point that was brought up early is what you are assessing is equal to or less than the benefit that has been added to the property.
And then to address the road, in a, in a perfect world, um, how long should this road, the new road, last?
30 plus years with maintenance and, and, you know, take care of it. To the point of, of the road having been done before, um, one of the challenges that we have with Fifth Street is again, going back to the utilities being constructed in the early 70s, is we start getting towards the end of the, the life of those utilities that were first put in the ground. And so, um, we, you get in a situation where you want your project, you want to make sure that the surface of your road, that the utilities under the road have a life at least as long as the surface that you're going to construct over them. Uh, so in this case, where the utilities need to be part of this project because of their age and ensuring, you know, reliable service going forward, um, you can't replace those, those utilities. I'm sure people, it's all too vivid in their minds. I'm sure people, it's all too vivid in their minds, the, the mess and the hole that, holes that were dug over the course of the summer. You can't replace those utilities without taking the road out to do it. So, they, they, whether you like it or not, they end up getting tied together for a project like this.
Okay.
The, now, the intent going forward with proper maintenance and pavement management, the next time this road is, is in need of improvement, it would be some sort of a resurfacing project, similar to what we're doing with our mill and overlay program that we've just started now in the developments in town. That would be what I would anticipate. Seal coating of the road to prolong its life and then at some point a mill and overlay to put a new surface on it to, again, to continue to extend the life of the road. That would be the normal life cycle. What's that?
No, that stuff was done on Fifth Street.
And that could be-
That'll get, like I said, it was overabused and used.
Yeah.
School projects and all the hauling.
I think we, we seal coated it once that I can remember, but-
I mean, it got beat up pretty fast.
Neither's milling overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and again, to that point is regardless of the condition of the road, the utilities underneath it still would have dictated digging up the road.
So, now, they won't be doing that anymore, right?
Uh, that, if, if it's done, you'll be talking to a different engineer at that point, I would, I would think.
I like Dave-
You said at the beginning of your statement, it's like a twenty thousand dollar assessment amount. That basically puts your property value by that much?
Yes. That, 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 to, to the school's point, that is the, the legal test, that the improvement, that what you're being assessed has to be equal to or less than the, the special value or a special benefit that it's added to the project.
Oh, it's gonna raise the price. That's kinda rising some more right now.
Well, I guess, I'm not, I'm not an assessor.
That's where he's going, right?
I, I, well, I, I'll leave that to somebody else to determine. What, what I will say is, again, is, you know, obviously, there's real cost to this project. It's a one-point-two million dollar project and, and, you know, the purpose of the night is to give everybody a chance to comment on their, their assessable portion of this project, but it's, it's a one-point-two million dollar project that I absolutely believe adds benefit to those, those properties and your assessment role is, has been developed to apportion those costs in a manner that doesn't exceed the legal test.
And like you said, this, this policy's been in place for quite some time. You can see these projects that, you know, we've used that policy, assessment policy on all those past projects. Interest rate obviously is much better than some of those past projects that we're seeing. You know, and we did kind of go in the middle of the ten to twenty year. We thought fifteen years would be about the right, uh, amount of time for the assessment. So, that's where the fifteen years came from.
And, and what I would say too is, just to, to be clear, that, that's not to say that these numbers aren't significant or to, to not, to not understand the, the impact that these numbers have on, on the individual property owners. You know, again, I think cities use the, a consistent process in the past. The assessment role tries to account for the comments that you've given, but that's, that's not to try to diminish the, the, the impact that these assessments have on people.
Right.
So, is that where it's gonna happen? I mean, I can't get the, I can't get the bank, so I'm not gonna-
No, it's locked in. So, we, this was done through our finance, financing process that the bond, the bond that the city took out for the, our, the city's fifteen-year schedule, this is the rate back in February that was approved by our financial advisor, or when we sold the, the bond.
Where was it in two thousand four, when the other street projects were done?
So, those are the rates that the-
Five point seven.
Five point seven and six is what those projects paid.
Where do those projects come in as far as dollar figures? Just up, I mean, is it, wait, is this one-point-two, like, the highest or are some of those in the same range?
I mean, I can comment. Ours was done in oh-seven. We're a corner lot.
Which one? Are you the second one here?
Yep.
That's the one you're talking about, okay.
Yep. It was, I believe, eleven thousand five hundred for the frontage and another fifteen hundred for the side street.
The total project was up in the million dollar range?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that pro- those projects were much, much bigger projects.
So, it's hard to compare.
Yep. And at that time, we felt Fifth Street was still in good enough condition back then, so Fifth Street wasn't included in that for that, only for that reason.
Maggie, I got a question back on the interest rate. So, we sold the bonds or borrowed the money at basically, it was one-point-one-four-four-nine-one, basically one-point-five, but we have to charge, we can't change our interest rates to the residents, that three-point-five, we can't lower that?
I can look into it. I think, I don't think that the city, uh, I don't think that the city's, like, our determination. I think that's something that's, like, a legal, uh, written in legal statute. But I, I can look into it, but when I confirmed that with the financial advisor, that's the number that-
That adds up to a lot, I mean, you know, fifteen years.
Typically, the city would take what you borrowed the money for, then you would have a percent and a half, two percent on top of that because you are carrying that money.
But we're only gonna carry it for ten years.
It's your, your call.
Like, after that, that, that-
He says you're carrying it for fifteen.
No, yeah, you, you borrowed it for fifteen.
We did?
Yep.
Hmm, okay.
So, the city essentially pays for the project entirely and then we get reversed over time. So, that's, it's, it's kind of the interest that this built in for the project that we're financing, like, the city pays for it all and then over time, the assessments kind of come back.
The hearing course is over, right? So, I don't know what we're-
Sure is.
But I, I did want to know, how, how do we address the city council, our, our declining property value? It is declining, so how's the city council gonna approach that? How, Dave, explain to me-
We, we don't. We, we have, we have made improvements adjacent to your property that we, we say increase the value of your property by the amount that you're being assessed. And what the tax, what the tax, the county does with it, we don't, we don't consider that. We spent one-point-two million dollars improving the utilities in the streets and we believe we've assessed of, uh, an appropriate amount to the benefiting properties and that that benefit doesn't exceed the value.
As the county assessor says, your property has declined in value, not increased in value, I guess I don't, I don't see why there would be a, a change or, or decrease in the overall assessment. Because the law says it has to increase in value, but the county's saying it's decreasing value at least through January of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, but it, it's a one point. If, if the value of your house went down, if you put on a new roof, the roof still costs thirty thousand dollars. Doesn't matter what the, the value of your, your, what, what you're saying.
The value of your property has calculated and the company's calculated and-
Well, I, what I would say, Joel, we're, we're not, that, that isn't, not considering what we're doing here tonight and, and you'll have the opportunity, you'll have the opportunity to make that case.
Wanna make sure I got that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions, comments, clarification needed before we discuss a motion? Do you mind come, do you mind coming to the podium?
Well, it's for people, it's for people that are listening online.
There's other people online, yeah, thank you.
Mary Carpenter lives right over here, four-twenty Blue Jay. If we were to sell before the, this loan is paid off, how, I mean, it's not coming through on our property tax? It is.
It is. And that'll just roll over to the new, to the new owner.
When, no, no, usually, I, I'm pretty sure when you, if you go to sell, a realtor will pull an assessment, uh, contact us or the county to pull an assessment, um, schedule on your property. At that time, usually when you sell, that gets taken care of with the selling process.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Maggie, can you go to the slide that shows what the difference from what our feasibility and payments were?
Oh.
I think from the first assessment, when we were assessed on the corner lot, if I remember right, I think it's ultimately the seller's responsibility unless it's negotiated with-
Yeah, I think it's a negotiation.
Otherwise, it's ultimately the seller that needs to pay that difference, the assessment off, I think, in the sale.
All right. So, if we have no other questions for the engineer or the administrator, then I'll look for a motion to approve resolution eleven dash oh-eight dash twenty-one dash forty-eight for the 2021 Street Project assessments.
I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution eleven dash eight dash twenty-one dash forty-eight. We have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
The, the only point of clarification I want to make is just the, the point about the parking lot. I would like to just make sure that that, that has been properly accounted for and adjusted, the, the numbers adjusted accordingly if that, that, if it has.
Okay, yep. And would that be part of the motion in the second, your own?
Yeah.
Both okay with that? Okay. Perfect, thanks, Steve.
Well, we haven't voted.
Perhaps.
I'd like, I'd like to see if we couldn't lower the interest rate.
I can't, we can look at it? I doubt it. I've already asked the, asked the financial advisor how that number was determined and I know it's-
Well, if you use our assessment policy, you just use the two percent like it's, like it states, but-
Right.
Change that.
I, I can, again, I can look, but based on how we financed the project, this is the percentage that was determined back in Jan-, back in February, based on what we sold ours at, at that interest rate. You can put that in your, your, I don't know. I, I just don't have an answer for you at this moment on that.
But Maggie, the policy is two percent above whatever we sold it for. So, but the interest rate is following the policy.
Exactly.
Along with the thirty percent on the certain items and the hundred percent on the other. That is all-
It is following policy right now.
City policy that's been in place since early two thousands.
Yep.
Right. So, that is the percentage that we based our bond issuance on, based on our policy.
Okay.
And that's kind of where I, where I'm at. And Maggie, if you can go back to the one slide where they reduced, uh, from, from our actual numbers to the, or from the feasibility to the actual numbers. Because this policy's been in place for so long, we've used it for so many projects, so many residents have been impacted with it, I, I, I struggle with changing it. I think the interest rate is half of what some of them have been in the past. I was concerned with our first numbers that came out and I thought they were too high and I wanted to find a way to get those kind of closer, more in line what we've seen with other projects. And now with the difference that's happened from the actual numbers that have been taken off, I, I feel we're in line with what we've done in the past. That's kind of where I'm at. But that was, that's where I was at the beginning of the project. I thought they were up a little too high. I wanted to try to get those done, what we could do, but I, I think that's happened now just off the bidding and now with the competitive interest rates. So, I personally, out of fairness for all the other projects and all the other residents who, who have been impacted by this policy, I think it's fair.
Do you think we should maybe consider though the fact that there isn't very many properties included with this, considering some of the other projects had quite a few to spread the cost?
I, I thought about some of that myself too, but then it's, it's cost of projects too. This is a one-point-two million versus, uh, you know, those bigger projects that might have been up near three million. Uh, so I, I think the policy's a policy and, and the square footage is a square footage and I, I, from that aspect, I think it's fair, in my opinion.
Um, I live on Ridge Road, so I was assessed in two thousand seven for that project and we had the same conversations was, it was a smaller project, there was less homes, your, your project's even less homes than that project was. The same concern, but I struggled, I, the consistency of the policy is where we're, where I'm sitting is, I mean, I, I've been in your shoes. I sat there, the project was ten years earlier, so, you know, my assessment part, maybe the dollar amount was a little bit less than that and I don't have a corner lot, but it also was ten years ago. And the cost of projects have increased as well, but-
Right.
I've, I've been there and I've, I paid up for ten years on my property taxes.
You already paid to be a corner lot.
Yeah, right, yeah, you're part of that one too, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
Is there anything else to consider to lower it at all?
The only thing that you can do is go against your own policy. So, everything presented tonight is based on policy. And so, the city council would have to consider breaking its policy to, to change this at all.
And then, basically, the rest of the city would have to have their taxes increased or come up with money to pay the difference.
Yes. It would either, one, come out of the, somehow come under, come out of the general fund or the enterprise funds, which is water and sewer and, yes, water and sewer.
Yeah, because I, I did a lot of thinking about that too, Chad, and, and what, you know, I get, I get this is a lot of money, I, I, I get that, but per our policy and fairness to residents and fairness to everyone who's paid on this policy, I, I struggle with that. I'm sorry?
They don't have all the traffic that we have either.
Well-
I mean, it's got a lot of busy-
It's the second busiest road in the area.
And, and again, yeah, I understand, yep.
It is different than most street projects because of the school and so.
Well, Chad, I think you said like your eleven thousand was your front-
Eleven-five or something.
Yeah, whatever. But I'm guessing our frontage is probably similar, so since two thousand seven, that will, will double, right?
Pretty close.
Can I ask a general question about the interest rates?
So, if we're just paying back the city, okay, the city will not be paying their portion because we're all paying interest. Is that, is that a correct statement? Is that assumption correct?
Can you say that one more time?
So, if I'm assessed eleven thousand dollars and I take fifteen years to pay it off, I think someone did some math, they're gonna, I'm gonna be paying seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars. Well, that money's going to the city of mayor. I'm not paying the bank, is that correct? I'm paying back the city of mayor.
So, you, okay.
Because you guys said that, you guys borrowed the money at a certain-
The city is the bank.
Right. So, when we take fifteen years to pay that back, we're gonna be paying a lot more than the four-hundred-seventy-some thousand dollars. We're gonna be paying-
Financing accounts for the fact that this is gonna be paid off over fifteen years and that the money's gonna come in over that time. So, all, all of the financing's based on, on those assumptions.
Understood, but we're paying more than, we're paying more as a, as a community, we're paying more than our four-hundred-seventy-three thousand, if that's-
And so is the city.
That's what I'm, that's what I wanted to clarify is.
Yes.
Okay, so we are also paying part of, if you borrowed the money at one point, whatever, and we're paying three-something, then it, again, I'm not a mathematician-
And, and I can't answer the question because I'm not the financial advisor, but, but it accounts for the idea that it gets paid off over time. Some people might pay it off, some people might not. Accounts for all that to come up with those numbers.
I, like I said, it is, it appears that if we're paying more interest than what the loan was taken out for, then we will be paying-
It, it's all reimbursing the city for their costs associated with, with the, the project and the, the funding of it.
I don't quite understand it, Dave, but I gotta believe you.
Yep. It's not a money-making operation for the city, I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you're trying to make money, but I just, you know, if we're paying more interest than this- paying more interest than the city, then maybe there's a way to reduce that.
One other thing to think about maybe is, does Agave use Blue Jay or Fifth Street more than we do? I mean, it, it, you said footage, is based on footage and stuff. And value, right? The value.
Yep.
They park right up to our corner just about every day of the week. So Agave's every day parking on our side of Fifth. I mean.
It's, it's a public street which the city's paying seventy percent of.
Twelve thousand and it's twelve thousand something.
Yep.
It's just, we're, we're paying the same as the.
And the city's paying the majority of it.
So it's.
The city's paying the majority of it plus the, most of the frontage, or half the frontage on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
Because that's a city lot, so.
So it's not really based on how much a street is used, or who's using it?
No.
Okay, okay.
No.
All right, any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution eleven dash oh eight dash twenty-one dash, eleven dash oh eight dash twenty-one dash forty-eight with the caveat that the city engineer will relook at some, just confirm those numbers. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in. Thank you for participating. Please stay if you would like, by all means. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, Maggie, can we move to seven A one compost site recycling center?
Mayor Dodge and council, in front of you this evening is a recommendation from the personnel committee to hire a compost recycling site attendant. As you know, the city has been looking for a part-time employee who can manage the site during the designated open hours. So the hours would be Saturday, starting mid-November of this year. We'll go back to Saturdays only from eight to twelve P M. That goes during the winter months. And then we will do, in mid-spring, we open it back up on Wednesdays from five to eight. And then we are looking to extend the hours on Saturdays from eight to two P M. I mean, eight A M. to two P M. So the city administrator and public works employee, we did hold an interview with an applicant. Name is Rick Becker. We did recommend to the personnel committee hiring him at fifteen dollars per hour. We did feel that he would be a good fit for the position. He talked about interacting with residents, getting out and educating, and we felt that that would be something that we're looking for. We did bring it to the personnel committee, and the personnel committee agreed to recommend to council to hire Rick Becker at fifteen dollars per hour. City staff is in the process of updating a current shut on site. We're gonna add heat and air conditioning and also a window and a, a door that would provide some additional communication with a sliding window. So with that, there's a recommendation from staff in the personnel committee to hire Rick Becker at fifteen dollars per hour for the site attendant position.
All right, I'll look for a motion to hire Rick Becker for the compost site attendant at fifteen dollars per hour, contingent on successful background check.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are we only hiring one right now?
Right now, we're only hiring one, so we did get, this is the one application that we did receive. We are continuing to, to look for other people to, as far as balancing the workload. We did ask Rick about concerns about working every Saturday and every Wednesday, but he said that he was confident that he could work these hours and that he wouldn't have an issue. If something did come up as far as him having to call in sick or something happening, we would have him notify us as soon as possible ahead of time so we could figure something out. Otherwise, if it is short notice, we do have a camera on site that we would continue to, even with him on the site, we would continue to have that monitoring the site. But we will continue to look for another position or fill this position with a second person, just so that we have a backup.
So we discussed that at personnel committee, and right now, kind of what we decided if last minute he calls in sick or something like that on a Saturday, he'll call the on-call number by seven thirty A M., let the on-call personnel, they'll come in, open it up and, and close it at the end of the day, so we'll at least have it open. And again, like Maggie said, we have cameras and they're now monitoring it, so we feel that'll be, that that'll work.
And I would make sure if we decide to offer it to another person, that Rick might be, these are his hours and these are his days that he works, just to make sure that we're not taking away from, it would be more of a backup.
Right, and we did, we did say that we would communicate that, because I think right now it's gonna be, let's see how it's, how it goes, if we have any issues. Because I also want to be mindful that Saturdays are kind of a busy time for a lot of people, and so wanna, again, wanna be mindful of having a bal, work-life balance, so. But again, at this time, I think we're, we're confident that these hours will be covered and will communicate with Rick if there's any concerns and if we need to get a second person in.
With the camera, though, is there any possibility of doing Wednesday through Saturday or anything like that, at least during city business hours?
Uh, we have, uh, we have discussed with the county, opening the site without an employee. They are, since it's a.
Is there any way we could at least separate the dumping stuff? You know, you have maybe a, a separate gate to come through, utilize the dumpsters, but at least you could use the brush pile?
Separate compost and recycling center.
Right, at least, at least for the residents, a mayor, having it open during city hours Monday through Friday would be, I would think, beneficial. And I don't think you'd have a ton of traffic, but I think it'd be beneficial.
I think we can certainly look into that. I, I, some of the, the plan now going forward is to start getting some of this information when people are coming in. Do they, they'll start asking them, you know, would other days be helpful? So far, we haven't had a lot of complaints or a lot of residents saying, hey, I wish a compost was open every day. But yeah, I think that's the plan, to get there and start getting some information from the residents, really get it to what is best for them.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know we have talked in the past about considering gating it off.
That's where we extended Saturdays to two P M. in the summer now instead of noon to help with some of that. But we're gonna gather that information and react appropriately, I think.
Sounds good.
And did we find that the illegal dumping is happening in the dumpsters?
Yeah, there is, you get a combination of people dumping outside the dumpsters. We had that, we had a T V, we had some other electronics, but it's very, very often people will.
And this was while it was staffed?
Um, yeah, it happens sometimes when it's staffed, too, but the, the.
I guess, how do you drop off a T V without nobody noticing unless it's like a.
Yeah, if you don't have somebody going out and interacting, people can sneak things in. But it's, it's of the request of the county to have it staffed at all times. And so it's a partnership that we've had with the county for a long time. We, unless we section off our part and have separate hours for each one, we really need, it's, it's about working with the county at this time and, and having it staffed, so.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, Maggie, seven B one, two thousand tanker generator replacement.
I must have, I apologize. I think I have these opposite. Um, so on our, on our agenda, we have this first in the packet. It's opposite, so I apologize for that. So Mayor Dodge and Council, the fire department purchased a Spartan tanker truck in two thousand as part of the rescue apparatus fleet. So within the last month or so, the generator on the apparatus has gone down and needs to be replaced. So the, the company that built the apparatus and supplied the current generator is no longer in business, and there is no company that is able to fix the current generator. So a little background, generators, I'm just, I'm gonna leave this for a second. Generators are used to provide a reliable power source for scene lighting and the powering of small tools and devices that are used on a scene. So it, it does need to be replaced. So staff received two quotes for two types of generators. One was a, one is a smart power generator. It's fifteen kilowatts. That cost is twenty-five, or twenty-three thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. The other is a Harrison, also fifteen kilowatts at nineteen thousand six hundred eighty-one. So the fire chief and I did talk about it, the replacement of the current generator. Both of these would work. The smart power does cost a little bit more, but would also, and would also need to be retrofitted and installed on top of the truck because it will not fit in the current spot that the current generator is. So the alterations and the retrofitting are part of that cost increase. The Harrison would fit in the spot of the current generator and does not have to have any modifications. I believe another difference is a, an automatic shut-off, and Andy might know a little bit more than that. But we felt that that wasn't a, something that justified the cost increase. So with that, we are recommending that the Harrison generator would be the better decision at this time, as it does not need to be retrofitted and it costs less. It's our recommending, moving forward with that generator to be paid for out of the fire capital fund in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars.
Perfect, thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the Harrison generator for the two thousand tanker at the cost of nineteen thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I was making corrections, sorry.
The, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep, thank you.
I was wondering why the tanker had a generator on it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to the American Rescue Plan Act, fire department base radio and radios.
All right, so in front of you this evening, we, you're being asked to consider approval of the purchase of a fire department base radio and antenna that supports the base radio and seven radios with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So at the October twenty-fifth meeting, we did review that the city did receive two hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents in A R P A funds from the federal government to aid in navigating through the pandemic. The city council did discuss priorities and asked the city administrator to work with staff to put together a timeline. I did include that in your packet, what I'm proposing thus far. I am, I will, I'm open to any feedback as well. So as far as projects for 2021, I am recommending the purchase of the base radio for the fire station, along with the supporting antenna in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and three cents. I believe that that makes sense at this time because as we're shifting things to the new fire station, this is an upgrade that's needed, and it will take time to, with supply chain issues, it, it may take longer to get it in than, than in the past what we've been used to. Also, in addition, the fire chief has expressed interest and has discussed with me purchasing at least seven radios at this time to bring the number of radios to the point where each firefighter would have a radio. In the future, we would replace eleven of the existing radios in 2022 because, Andy, you said they're at twenty years?
Um, yeah, I guess eleven of them are between twenty and eighteen to twenty years old. I've got eleven radios in that category.
Yep. And then, so that, the seven radios would at least bring us up to everyone having a radio, and then additionally, premium pay is something that I'm continuing to look at, and that's just a guess number right now for frontline employees. So the, so with that, I'm open for any questions, and Andy is, but we are recommending those items for the fire department at this time to be used with A R P A money in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
All right, any questions for either Chief One or Maggie? Hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to approve a base radio at fourteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, the antenna for the base radio at one thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and three cents, and then seven individual radios for twenty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So Andy, the radios that are like eighteen, twenty years old, they will work with this new base.
Yes, correct.
But we just need to consider updating.
They're starting to get bad. They're starting to get some screens. They're getting bad. They're not repairable. I just, I know bad, I can't repair them, so.
Okay.
And the updated radios, will they be repairable?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Maggie, if you could, just remember that we're, we're still looking at nine, nine more radios, maybe, and plan, maybe we can, if we can plan on that, maybe still reuse the remaining money in the second allotment or something.
Yeah, it's on the, in the plan. It's under.
Is that that blue thing?
Yeah, it's like the late summer, fall, the additional eleven radios.
Any different colors for me?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Andy. So with that, then, city council reports. Councilmember Melander, anything to report on?
No, I should have a community ed meeting next week. I missed the planning commission meeting. I was having procedure.
Okay. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
Um, I did the Carver County Leaders Meeting. They talked a lot about, you know, they had people from all of the communities, the area Chamber of Commerce, talked about jobs and, and stuff like that. I know, Larry, you had mentioned about how they were spending some of their money. I was not able to ask any questions. My microphone didn't work, so, but I thought it was a good meeting, very interesting. You know, Carver County across the board is experiencing the same thing, so.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember, how was anything to report on?
Park Board tomorrow night.
Uh, we just had personnel meeting, and it was covered.
Yep. Yep, that was the same personnel committee meeting. We talked about the compost site. We did have a, a public works meeting also to start talking about our next projects for over on Coldwater Crossing and Hidden Creek on the Mill and overlays on what, we're gonna start combining some of the years now. We need to bond, so we're gonna try to get some of the bigger, bigger project to bond for it. So that'll be coming to council, maybe a work session early next year, just to kind of give an overview, kind of ideas of what we're thinking, so. That's all I had, so with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.